Good evening, welcome to the Village of Westmont Committee, the whole meeting for June 3rd, 2010. I'd like to ask our clerk to please take the roll call at this time.
Your Honor, the clerks here, trustee Emery.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Forsley.
Here.
Trustee Klebenow is absent. Trustee Scott.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Cyril is absent. Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Assistant Manager and Economic Development Director Kimball.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Fire Chief Weiss.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Von Baggott.
Here.
Village Planner Malik.
Chief Travis Beckman. Thank you.
Chief Travis is here too.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item before us this evening are the minutes of the Committee at the Hall Meeting held May 13th and Board Meeting held May 17th, 2010. Any corrections? Hearing none, moving right along, open forum. Do we have any?
We do have one open forum.
Request. We have one open forum request. Barbara Ruse, Angel Haven Foundation.
Good evening, my name is Barbara Ruse and I am a Director of the Angel Haven Foundation. I am here to request a four-day yard sale pass for June 17th through the 20th. This is our annual fundraiser. What we do is currently we're supporting 170 families in the Appalachian Mountains of Virginia and we're trying to raise enough money throughout this next year to purchase food for them. The sale, we would like it to be held at the West Hills Community Church. We've spoken with them already and they've given our permission as they did last year. That is at 213 East 55th Street. Our sale runs from Thursday through Sunday from 9:00 in the morning until the mosquitoes come out, to be honest with you. We are currently looking for helpers, volunteers to come out and just unpack the boxes, put the stuff out on the table. We don't mark anything. The community is more than welcome to come and look for their treasures and just leave a donation. But we are always looking for volunteers to unpack and repack at the end of our sale. If anybody would like to donate to us, myself and my girlfriend Nancy Mueller, we come out and we pick it up from you so you don't have to worry about bringing it to the sale, you're more than welcome to. If you would like to leave donations, I live at 405 Lindley. People have been donating to us now for 10 years. We do collect donations all year round, so you're more than welcome to just drop something at the door. We are tax deductible, so if you would like a receipt, we just ask that you put your name and address in your donations and I'll mail you a receipt off, okay? The other thing is because 100% of our proceeds are poured into the foundation, I would like to ask for the tent fees because we have probably 15 tents that we put up to be waived for us. And finally, if there were any complaints from our last year's sale, if anybody would like to call me directly, we can certainly talk about them and I'll get them rectified. Or if you'd like us to come and pick up donations from you, my phone number is 630-971-1842.
Barb, do you take furniture?
Furniture, appliances, everything you have in your own personal home. As far as appliances go, they must be electric, okay? If you do have a gas stove or a dryer or something, we'll certainly take that and put that in our sale because down in the hollers, they can't get natural gas out there, so everything is electric out there.
If you don't mind, I'd like to ask our police chief if there were any problems last year that we might want to.
Okay, absolutely.
Take care of for this year.
Right, absolutely.
Off the top of my memory, Your Honor, there wasn't. However, I will check tomorrow and if there is, I will contact you and we'll address them. I know there was in previous years, but last year since they moved to the church lot, I think it was a lot better for parking and for their event as well as than having it in the neighborhood. But off the top of my head, no, but I will check.
It was nice because it was so visual. I bet you got more people.
We had additional people, but last year we had to pay almost $4,000 just for help in transporting it, you know, from my place in the storage unit and that type of thing.
So it's a little more cumbersome, but it's about our location.
Right, but now that we've, you know, went through the sale once, I think we're going to have a better handle on it this year, so hopefully a lot of our community out there will offer their assistance. And just, I have two gentlemen that have worked with me now for probably six years and they come and they load up the trailer and they take it there and then we just need people to take the stuff out of the box, put it on the tables. Okay, any other questions?
Uh-uh. Great. Thank you, thank you for doing it. It's a great cause.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, on the agenda for consideration?
Monday.
Monday. Okay. Moving right along, reports, the mayor. The first thing I'd like to acknowledge is the passing of trustee Ellen Emery's father several days ago and we offer our condolences to you and your family. I understand it was something that happened rather suddenly and when that happens, it's very difficult for the family members to handle, so our sympathies are with you and your family.
Thanks.
Next, I would like to call Bob Mackert and perhaps Karen Mackert and some of the rest of the Westmont Special Events Corporation people forward to give us an update on the Taste of Westmont.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We're a month away, Taste is coming next month. This year, we're going to have it on July 8th, 9th, 10th, and the 11th. This year is unique because we have an additional Thursday that will be opening between 6:00 and 10:00 and that'll be our Kids' Palooza where we open up the carnival area this year. We have $15 wristbands that can be bought right at, right on site at our ticket booth right there. We have some new featured rides this year and we changed a little bit of layout for the carnival area to kind of come to the, by the Methodist church lot behind China Chefs there. So it'll kind of make a little bit of an L shape for the event too as well. As far as the rest of the event goes, the 9th, 10th, and the 11th, Friday, we open up at 4:00 going till 11:00. Saturday is noon to 11:00 o'clock and then Sunday is again noon till 9:00. And then I'll let my wife talk about the food vendors and the entertainment this year.
Hi, everyone, good evening. We have a great lineup of music this year. On Friday night, we are going to have the Beach Toys and what they play is a tribute to the Monkees, the Beach Boys, and the Beatles. So they are excellent, they came highly recommended, and we're really excited to have them. On Saturday, our main event is going to be the Eyes of March coming back. Prior to them, we're actually having Jimmy Buffett Band, so that'll be nice and exciting. We haven't had Jimmy Buffett. And our Blues Night, we are going to have The Little Ed and the Blue Imperials and he is absolutely excellent. For you, you know, people that may not like blues that much, he is so inspiring and so exciting and so full of energy. He is just the greatest blues guy. I really like him. I saw him when we hired him and he's just awesome. This year, we have 20 food vendors, so we're up one from last year. We actually were full with our food vendors by April 1st, we were completely full. Our new restaurant this year is Papado's, so they're bringing a lot of seafood items in, so that'll be new to the fest. So we are full. We are also adding a second beer tent with limited hours. It's going to be by the entertainment, by the main stage and they will be open when the main entertainment is going on, so it'll be a little bit more convenient for people. It's definitely going to be limited though to like two beers, different kinds of beers that will be there at that event or that area. But anyways, we're really excited, the Taste is coming. Cruising Nights started tonight, it's really exciting downtown, a lot of cars showed up and so we're really excited for Cruising Nights as well.
Karen?
Yes.
And true to Westmont Taste tradition, the food vendors are all Westmont-based, correct?
That is correct.
Oh, I love that we showcase our own restaurants.
Yeah, as of April 1st, like I said, they were all full. I must get though about two to three calls per day from other restaurants, mostly out of Westmont, almost all out of Westmont, that really want to be in the fest. So also our regular vendors, we're having the craft area again and our commercial vendors, we are just filling up like crazy, so there's going to be a lot of great stuff going on at the Taste this year.
Good.
So, yeah, and one more thing, we need a lot of volunteers, so we're still in need of volunteers in the alcohol area and even at the Welcome Center, so if you want a free T-shirt and a couple of free drinks, please call our office and volunteer.
And a nice picnic in the summer.
Yes, that's right.
Absolutely, yes.
And the phone number is?
And that office number is?
Is.
Oh, no.
It's westmontevents.com if you want to go to the website and our phone number is Thank you, everyone.
And just really quick about Cruising Nights, we have magnets for everyone here, so we'll leave them up here for you guys to have and take, so.
Oh, goodness.
Any other questions? Nope. Okay, thanks.
Thank you for coming in. And next, I would like to read a proclamation regarding Olympic Day, June 23rd, 2010. Whereas for over 100 years, the Olympic movement has built a more peaceful and better world by educating young people through amateur athletics, by bringing together athletes from many countries in friendly competition, and by forging new relationships bound by friendship, solidarity, and fair play. And whereas the United States Olympic Committee is dedicated to coordinating and developing amateur athletic activity in the United States to foster productive work relationships among sports-related organizations, and whereas the Village of Westmont promotes and supports amateur athletic activities involving Olympic and Paralympic sport, and whereas the Village of Westmont promotes and encourages physical fitness and public participation in amateur athletic activities, the Village of Westmont assists organizations and persons concerned with sports and the development of athletic programs for able-bodied and disabled athletes, regardless of age, race, or gender. June 23rd is the anniversary of the founding of the modern Olympic movement, representing the date in which the Congress of Paris approved the proposal of Pierre de D. Coberton to found the modern Olympics. Now therefore, I, William Ron, Mayor of Westmont, do hereby proclaim with much appreciation and admiration, June 23rd, 2010, as Olympic Day, and the Village of Westmont, and urge all citizens to observe such anniversary with appropriate ceremonies and activities.
Nice, very nice.
Thank you. And that is all that I have.
Mayor, Mike Marshall. Mike.
Almost forgot. We've got a request here from Mike Marshall. Would you care to come forward regarding a request from the Westmont Lions Club? Sir?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening trustees. My name is Mike Marshall, I'm a member of the Westmont Lions Club. In addition to the board action we're requesting for Monday night, we would like to announce that the Fourth of July celebration down at Ty Warner Park on the Fourth of July is off and running. It will be held, fireworks, barnyard bingo, everything that you've come to expect from Westmont Fourth of July celebration is going to take place and we hope to see the entire community out as we usually do. If there's any questions I can entertain, I'd be happy to.
Questions?
Look forward to it.
It's going to be another great one.
Thank you. Thank you. Our agenda for Monday. Next, our village clerk.
I have just a couple of minor items. First of all, I want to congratulate Bishop's Chilling on 85 years of business. That's a very, very long time and I think we all should congratulate them on that. And another little congratulations that I heard yesterday from former trustee Jim Linehan came in our office and his daughter Ashley has joined the Peace Corps and I just wish her the very best because that's hard work, those kids work very hard. I believe he said she'll be in Romania teaching English as a second language, so.
Very nice.
They volunteer and it's hard work, so I wish her the very best. I really respect her, that's a tough job, so. And my deepest sympathy to you, Ellen.
Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Our village attorney, John Zemanek.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got one item. I emailed it out to everyone today and I passed it out tonight. It's a request to add to the agenda for Monday evening regarding the residences of Oak Brook Hills. You may recall several months ago, the board approved a settlement agreement with the, well, I should back up, the developer went out of business, his surety bond was forfeited, we are now in possession of that, approximately $170,000 to complete public improvements at that development. There's also some excess bond money that was deposited with the village that has been forfeited and with, between village staff and the homeowners association there, a bank which is a mortgagee of several properties and a court-appointed receiver for those properties, we've gotten our heads together, determined what public improvements need to be completed, what excess money there may be for the homeowners association to use towards private improvements, and we've drafted a multi-party agreement that will allow the village to make payouts using the money we're holding for these various public and private improvements. And the court-appointed receiver, who is a developer, will actually serve as a general contractor to make, to contract for the work, make sure it gets done, thus relieving the village of the responsibility of having to go out and publicly bid for this and perhaps losing some, some cost benefits that the general contractor otherwise could get. And so I've attached this multi-party agreement for you. It's been vetted pretty well by, by staff and all the parties and is now in a final form and if acceptable, we'd like to put it on for Monday.
Questions? Questions?
Do you need a motion to put it on the agenda for Monday?
No, we'll just add it if, if everyone's nodding their head, so it's like it's okay. Thanks, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Fred Kimball, our assistant village manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. With yours and the village board's permission, I would request permission to add one additional PO to the agenda for Monday evening. This is, represents the membership dues for the Village of Westmont and the Dupage Mayors and Managers Conference in the amount of $23,275.37. And we would also, Your Honor, like to request an executive session immediately following the close of this regular business session for purposes of discussion of personnel matters and also land conveyance sale price.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. Village trustees, trustee Scott.
Thank you, sir. My condolences to Ellen as well, and I also would like to report about the passing of one of our residents. For most of you that drove down Cass Avenue every morning during the school year at Richmond and Cass, you saw for those two years Carol Sindler, a fantastic lady who sat there and crossed those kids morning and night and waved to everybody. And it was, for those two years, I had the pleasure of waving to her twice a day and I could always look forward to seeing her there no matter what the weather was. Matter of fact, she tried to cross adults too. She would, you know, try to help everybody out and she'll be sorely missed. Went to the wake tonight and a fantastic family. They should be very proud of what she did and how she helped those kids, so I wanted to mention that.
Okay.
Matter of fact, the husband wanted me to thank the mayor for allowing her to give, have a place like Westmont to work and that kind of a job so she could deal with the kids and really enjoyed them, so.
How nice.
Just another example of the wonderful residents we have living in our fine village.
Absolutely, just a reminder.
That's great, thank you.
Nice lady.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just a thought, we have the South Side Garage Sale coming up, the community-wide garage sale on the 11th and 12th of June, so perhaps folks that are having that garage sale, if they have items left over that are of good quality, they might want to consider getting them over to Barb Ruse for her sale the next weekend. That might work well for people. Also wanted to wish a speedy recovery to Lorraine Devries who's recovering from surgery at Good Sam and I understand she's doing very, very well. Wanted to congratulate the Lions and the J.C.'s on the red, white, and barbecue, incredible success, wonderful in every sense. And just to remind everyone again, like all of our service organizations, proceeds, you know, end up right back in the community. They are very, very worthy charitable organizations that very much give back to the community. So thanks for everyone supporting that and coming out and thanks to them for putting it on. And also wanted to say condolences to Ellen, the passing of her father, and Westmont's associate trainer of the volunteer canine unit, so.
Yes, he was.
And they're very popular dogs, so that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Just to comment on the red, white, and barbecue, the one thing that they did this year that they haven't done in the past is they had a lot of vendors, I think there were six or seven vendors that were selling barbecue items and were very, very popular. When they first started, it was, it was just the contestants that were involved in the contest and if you would go up there as a resident, the only time you could taste any of the food is when they finished their competition, they gave their samples away. But this time, this year, there were a lot of different choices that all of us had for different kinds of barbecue and it was really, really nice and I had a lot of barbecue.
And just, I can't resist, just one last comment, congratulations to the fire department on winning the chili contest. Couldn't resist, sorry chiefs. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Yeah, just a couple of things, of course, my condolences to Ellen and her family. The other thing was that we had the downtown business event the weekend of the 14th and I think somehow or another some things got lost in the crossover. I would just like to say, I thought it was a very good event and I would also like to send out to Diane and Bob who came up with the Pirates theme to work and what they brought in was a fantastic, fantastic thing. Friday night, it was, it was hopping downtown, so it was, it was nice to see and I thank both of them for their time and effort on that. The other thing is, there is a public works meeting next Tuesday evening at the water department and I'm going to have a start time of 6:00 PM. And other than that, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Forsley.
Just my condolences to trustee Emery.
That's all.
Mayor, I have one more thing if I could. We're going to have a code enforcement meeting on Monday before the village board meeting at 6:30, Fred? 6:30.
Your call.
6:30.
Thank you.
Mark, go.
Yes. Yes.
I think Tom and Larry Forsberg want something. I don't know what they want.
They owe him time, obviously.
They both keep motioning to me and I have not a clue, so.
Jim, Ellen.
She's here, sir.
Oh, Ellen. He missed Ellen.
I'm sorry.
I'll be very quick, if I could, in talking to the Westmont Special Events Commission or Committee, we, as you all know, have squad car night coming up this month, I think it's June 23rd, 24th.
24th.
Thank you.
Wedding.
And they have asked me to approach the board. In their previous discussions about Cruising Nights, the board has approved the use of the Burlington and Cass parking lot for two events and they have asked that those two events be the squad car night and also the fire truck night. And I'd like to let the board know that's what we intended on doing, moving from their current location of Irving Street, just for those two nights, we moved to Burlington and Cass to see if there's any problems or I don't know if that needs to be on the agenda or just consensus of the board, but to see if there's any problems with that.
Yeah, I think we pretty much talked about it when we talked about cruising in general and pretty much surmised that we'd like to move that direction.
And the purpose is, is that last year we moved and a lot of the officers commented that they preferred being in the downtown area, being able to visit the businesses. They actually went to, walked up and down Cass Avenue, visited the businesses and they felt that they would like to be closer to that, they felt that they weren't part of it and wanted to be closer this year. So it's to, we do feed the officers and that is done at the Knights of Columbus and it's a lot easier for them to be there, be closer to their squad cars, get back and interact with the public and also receive their dinners. That's one of the main reasons.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have that on the agenda, this is a simple motion, just so we've got a record of the purpose, it is technically a private event put on by WSCC using public property.
That works.
Okay. Okay.
The other thing is, again, our police department, Westmont Police Department is proud to, again, this year participate in the Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics. I was most recently notified that the torch will be coming to Westmont again this year. It will be coming this Sunday, and I apologize for the short notice, but it will be this Sunday. It tends to run a little late, so they have us down here from 9:32 to 9:43, beginning at the intersection of Burlington and Cass. We will not be blocking off any roads, we will have the torch run from Burlington and Cass up to the police and fire facility, which should end at 9:43, but we intend to just have traffic either go around us or just be slightly delayed. We do not plan on closing any streets, just blocking off for the runner's safety. If anyone would like to come and see the torch, support the torch, I will either be biking or running or combination of therefore both, if I get 500 feet, then I can get on the bike, but I don't want to slow them down. But it, we traditionally, we run a little bit late, I've done this for the last, I think, six years and this year is a little bit different. They run the torch run in segments throughout Dupage County. They asked if Westmont wanted to participate and I said we would, since after my successful stint on top of Dunkin' Donuts, I said I could, the least I could do is run and get rid of some of the calories. And I also wanted to thank everyone who came to Dunkin' Donuts, who donated, trustee Emery has her cup. We raised $1,400 just that one day from 5:00 in the morning, I was there, until approximately 1:30. So I want to thank everyone, several organizations stopped, I know the Lions, the Rotary Club, trustees, a lot of village employees stopped, I just wanted to thank everyone. And again, nine, around 9:30, if you're late, don't worry, we'll probably be a little late ourselves, but come and see the torch run, it will be coming through with a small procession from about 9:30 until 9:45.
9:30 work time?
Excuse me. 9:30, they have us down for 9:32, starting at Burlington and Cass.
We should go.
Running north to the police and fire facility. So anywhere along that route, pardon me?
On Sunday, you said.
This Sunday, yes, this Sunday, I'm sorry. This Sunday, June 6th.
Excuse me, chief, can I ask a question?
No, Mayor, you cannot throw anything at me when I'm running.
You used the word bike, does that mean you're going to be riding a bicycle or are you going to be driving the police motorcycle?
Ooh, good question.
My feet don't touch the ground on a motorcycle, so it's got to be a bicycle.
Just go in one big circle.
With one leg down, yeah, that's probably what I could, then it'd fall over on me. No, it'd be a bicycle. If I don't run, I plan on biking the route.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mayor, now we have to pick her.
Larry, did you want to?
..................................................................................................................................................................................................................... directly assigned for the Taste parking, or if they're there for business. If they're there for business, they'll be directing them to those parking spots. That way, we'll have spots assigned for both business use and for the Taste of Westmont use. So we'd like to put that request in for the board consideration.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan. No, sounds good.
Just one comment. With the use of the Methodist Church parking lot, there was some concern about whether, you know, for the amusement rides, some concern the impact that may have on surrounding property owners, and I believe the ordinance designated that lot as an alternative backup location for the carnival rides if you had, if the village had to shut down the Methodist Church parking lot location due to noise.
That isn't the way I interpreted it.
I may be incorrect there.
I think you're right.
But I think it would be like, well, tonight it was really loud, so tomorrow we got to move it, and then it would be, it wouldn't be like instantaneous.
Okay, everybody stand in the car, go.
So you could close off parking.
And we assume that there was some type of movement of equipment, that this proposal would be changed accordingly.
Great, thank you, Larry. That'll be an agenda item for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Trustee Emery. Trustee Emery, I'm in. She didn't get her, her kind of.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't get my open forum.
Your open, I'm sorry.
A couple of things. First of all, thanks to everybody for the kind words and such that I've gotten. And I, she booked out of here, but it looks like Karen Mackert's doing really well since her back surgery. So at some point, I will be able to tell her that she looks like she's doing well. And I did want to comment briefly on the cop on top of Dunkin' Donuts. My husband went over and made two runs and told me that the cop that was supposed to be up there was down on the sidewalk.
Was that when we didn't have a ladder?
And there was a virtual, a virtual police chief that was in the freezer. But I did, so I did have to go over there, and he was up there and causing problems with passing traffic. So it was interesting. But thank you for your, for your time and devotion to the cause. It does. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? New business, Keith A. Becker honorary drive. Board to consider request to name a section of North Blackhawk Drive, S-Curve, for former Westmont Junior High School Principal Keith A. Becker.
This one I asked to have on is, many of you know, last year I went to the school board to ask if they would rename the school, Westmont Junior High to Keith Becker, or Becker Junior High, and they formed a committee, and up from the committee, we determined that the cost that the school gave us was unrealistic cost, and the actual cost to rename the school is under $10,000. But in this economic times and such, although we felt we could raise the $10,000, we didn't think it was the right time to do it. There's too many things happening. So anyway, some suggestions that came from that meeting, from that committee, was to rename that S-Curve to Becker, Keith Becker Drive, I think we said. I asked what the standard name was to Ron, and he said, we'll bring it to the board. And I know we've done this for other...
Yes.
Other things. So I'd like to see that, if that's possible, to rename. And I'm not sure if there's a cost involved in that, but I've already talked to some people that if there is, will bear that cost. I'm not sure how that works.
Here comes Steve May.
How much did it cost us to name Bob Napleton Drive?
The costs are just, the cost of the aluminum and the sign, and that's nominal. What caught my attention was using the term renaming the drive, and by designating it as an honorary drive, it's a second name, so we would not be undoing the Blackhawk Drive thing, so no electronic mapping gets altered or anything like that, so.
So it's just the sign that goes below the one that's...
Second sign, it would be brown and white.
We'll make that here, right? We make that in-house?
Yeah, here, I mean, Cass Avenue is, you know, Muddy Waters Drive, so Muddy Waters Way. So we'll just do the same thing. It's just a second honorary name.
It's a great honor for him. He's a wonderful man, and I wish we could have a lighted sign with his name on it. He's a great guy.
The one other suggestion that was made at the committee level that I was on was, is it possible to have one at, I don't know, was it Chestnut, and then one on Oakwood Drive?
Yes.
HN. So.
That would be nice.
So that's, and then hopefully, maybe when things get better, we can bring up the naming again of the school. But right now, this is the best we can do. Never.
I agree with you. He was a wonderful principal. He worked with all three of our children, and just a great, great man, and left this world way before his, his time.
And this way, we can get the name out there, because one thing we found is, since it's been 10 years since his retirement, and five since his passing, six since his passing, people don't remember. And I guess that's the idea, when you rename anything or put a name to it, you want people to continue that memory, and this is one way to do that.
Yes. Okay. Thank you. Any, any questions? This will be on for Monday. 15 South Cass, board to consider development request for Michael Oglesby and Robert Orozco to operate a bistro-style restaurant and catering business at the property known as 15 South Cass Avenue.
Hi, my name is Michael Oglesby. My business partner, Roberto Orozco, couldn't be here tonight. He's actually catering a graduation party. But we both have extensive backgrounds in food service and in the culinary field. We're chef school graduates in Chicago, and we're planning to open a bistro-style restaurant at 15 South Cass. We've been searching for different locations, and that seems to be the best location for us, and we love the area of Westmont. We currently have a catering clientele in the Hinsdale and Burr Ridge areas, and I turned in a kind of a prospective menu and list of hours that you may have, and I have another copy with me as well. We emphasize seasonal, fresh, local, locally grown, and organic food, actually presented beautifully, and we, as I was saying, we like the location of Westmont because it's a great area. It's central to our clientele. We were actually, one of the callers that, one of the calls that came into the special events group, trying to get into the Taste of Westmont, if we were going to be in our location in time, but they apparently are booked up, so. But we were hoping to be in the right area for that, at least for next year. If, if we're granted the business license and we move into our place at 15 South Cass, we plan on installing attractive window boxes, doing really nice plants with seasonal green plants, flowers, and herbs. Our prospective landlord has allowed us to, to upgrade the property and paint the trim, so we were thinking of painting all the, we were going to remove the awnings that are existing there and paint the trim gray, because we thought that would go with the green roof the best. So just kind of do a charcoal gray. So we thought we could really enhance the property, or, you know, the facade. We also wish to apply for and be considered for a downtown development grant to, to match the funds that we would put in to enhance the facade. And lastly, our moving in and opening in Westmont would also depend on something that's come up recently that we're hoping for, I guess, to be brought up at the next meeting, and that would be for us to be allowed to offer our patrons the, the option to bring their own wine into our establishment for, for dinnertime.
That is being studied by myself and our police chief, and working with the attorneys, and that is something that we are hopeful that we can get in place and pass as quickly as we can.
Great. Yeah, it seems to be a trend in, in some of the developing areas, especially with people, you know, having their, their nice wine collections and wanting to bring their own wine in, and we, you know, my business partner, Roberto, and I don't really emphasize wine so much, so we don't, we don't do the wine pairings as much as we ask our, our patrons to go ahead and do that themselves. So that would be really helpful to us. Also, I did go ahead and get an insurance quote for the Host Liquor Liability Insurance, which is right around $450 per year, in addition to, you know, the other insurance, the general liability that we would get, and the workman's comp that we would get. Those, those would be around $2,000. But anyway, yeah, something under 500, and it would be, it would be provided by a different provider. They mentioned Lloyds of London as the provider for that, so. That's the information that I have right now.
Would you, with the, with the bringing your own wine in, and I know that's really popular, there's a number of places in the city that do that. It's kind of fun, bringing your own wine in. I assume there'd be a corkage fee?
We were going to consider that based on sort of the, the check average of a specific table or party. If they were going to have the full, like, pre-fee dinner that we were going to offer, then we may do a smaller corkage fee.
Oh.
Or no corkage fee, maybe for some of our favorite clients. And then, but then if they just came in for appetizers or something, the corkage fee, we would expect, would be a little higher.
And can I assume that the wine would not stay on premise? For example, if I came in with my husband, and we didn't finish the bottle of wine, you would not be holding it for another night?
No, not for another night.
So there'd be no wine on, on site at all, or?
Wouldn't be, in the kitchen, we use, you know, some wine.
Well, other than to cook.
But yeah. No, if they left it behind, you know, it would probably be there, but it wouldn't be something that we would re-serve or anything, if that's, you know.
Trustee, I think discussions in, in the group that's working with the liquor commissioner, the mayor in his role as liquor commissioner, address that, and I think Chief Mulhern has some awareness of the state law that governs that particular matter, and I think he can speak intelligently to that.
T-H-Y-O-B, take home your own bottle. Not that Bob and I would ever have any luck.
We are looking at creating a bring-your-own-beverage liquor license. We're still in the preliminary forms of that because of this applicant, and one other business has approached us for such a, such an opportunity. We're either looking towards allowing this or creating a liquor license that will allow this. We're going to try to come up with something in that. State law requires, though, is if you, I were to bring a bottle of wine into a business, or purchase, right now, purchase a bottle of wine from a business and not consume it, I can ask them to seal it for me. What they will do is, Scott, they'll reseal the bottle, and they'll put that bottle of wine into a paper bag with a clear window and a receipt, a receipt for that bottle inside that. That allows the person to transport that open liquor home safely and not violate the open liquor transportation law. However, it has to be in the sealed bag, provided to by the business. This is something we looked at and may or may not be in the proposed license class or proposed or approved business practices. Again, we're still in the area of looking at that, nothing formal. Probably within the next couple of weeks, or if not the next board meeting, definitely the first board meeting in July, we'll have a proposal to the board. We're also looking at fees. We're very, we're trying to figure out what other towns charge for fees. Some towns do allow this, other towns do not allow this. That's how you satisfy the requirements for the open liquor container law.
Thank you.
So if you have a restaurant that has full liquor service already, and they want to add this to their repertoire for serving alcohol, there would be no additional charges to them, because they already have a full liquor license.
Yes, mayor, you're correct. In our discussions, again, we'll come to the board with some options, but one of the options, and to the liquor commissioner, was if you are a liquor licensed, a currently established liquor licensed business that's able to sell beer and wine or all liquors, you would not have to be required to get this additional license for bringing your own bottle. If you do not have a liquor license, as this applicant would not, he would have to apply for the new classification that would permit this to be happening. Because there is some responsibility, and there's some liability, that the applicant will also have to incur as well.
Now, do they card the people if they're suspicious of their age, if they come in with wine?
That's one of the things we, we're looking at. We're going to require that if this license classification, all the employees take the Basset Beverage Alcohol Sellers and Servers training. And again, here's the liability. If I bring the bottle in and they pour, they are actually pouring and could actually be breaking law serving, even though the person brings it in. So that's something that we're going to incorporate into the license and one of the practices that they're going to have to watch for.
Chief, if there's a, if they're already serving liquor right now, and we, and say we do something like this, if I were to purchase it from them to have the table, but I don't finish it, then can I still take it home?
Yes, that's the current law is right now. And the purpose for that is, is to discourage overdrinking. A lot of people would be, is I bought this bottle of wine, I paid for it, rather than leaving the restaurant and leaving half a bottle of wine there, I'll drink it, overconsume, and then thus be over the legal limit. The purpose of the law is to allow someone to, I purchased that bottle of wine, I don't want to consume the whole thing, because I don't want to over, overdrink. So I will seal the bottle, have the restaurant put it in the bag, thus discouraging overdrinking.
So restaurants are doing that right now?
They can do that right now, yes. State law permits that, yes. They changed that approximately two to three years ago to accommodate this.
Sounds like a great concept. The menu looks wonderful. And your prices are very reasonable.
For lunch or for dinner? Because somebody told me, for lunch, somebody in the area thought that they might be a little high, but...
Really?
We think that the...
I thought they were very reasonable.
Thanks. Yeah, I guess I would have a lot more questions about the BOIABU. I'm wondering if, how long it would take for us to apply and get that liquor license, or that, that limited liquor license. And I'm also wondering if there are other methods by which they could take their wine home. For example, maybe just, like, I know that in California, that they just cork the bottle and put it in the trunk or something, in a bag, but I'm not sure if that would apply here at all, as long as it's in the trunk, is what I've heard. Also, your question about leaving the bottle at the establishment, were you talking about maybe to come back and consume it at another time?
Yeah.
Next time?
You know, how, some restaurants do that.
Yeah, because I guess I've heard of that, too, and we would be open to that as well. You know, maybe having an inventory of customers' wine, if that was feasible.
I was just curious more than anything.
And we would be willing to take the, you know, the Basset training and doing all that, and we would obviously take responsibility for carding individuals. Our clientele tends to be a little older, but they may be bringing their, you know, somewhat grown-up children in with them or something, so I guess that would be the case where that would apply.
When are you looking to open?
We want to do our improvements in the building during July, and then open in August.
Wow.
Thinking.
Sounds like it'd be a nice little addition there.
We hope so.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks very much.
Yeah, our agenda.
Fred, I just have a quick question on that that just popped into my head. How are we in terms of parking requirements?
I believe we're good.
We're good.
I think the village planner can comment on that, but I believe they have adequate parking available. There's a full occupancy there, but they do have a pretty decent-sized parking lot immediately to the south of the building there.
Right.
You can write up, so there are 23 spaces.
Looks good.
Next item, Jewel Osco Liquor Tasting Ordinance Renewal. Board to consider an ordinance allowing Jewel Osco to conduct up to nine days of special event liquor tastings per month, as part of their Class 11 liquor license for years 2010 and 2011. This is exactly what we did last year, I believe.
I'm sure it's renewing.
Renewing it again.
Why don't we just move the podium to the back corner?
Deputy Chief Gunther's on vacation, or else he would be here. Again, as the mayor indicated, this is the same practice that was provided Jewel in the past. There was an expiration on it. This expiration is coming up or has passed, and so this would just allow Jewel to continue their practice for the next two years.
And everything worked fine last year?
No complaints.
Thank you. You can sit down again.
Thank you, sir.
Just take the first chair.
Yeah, just sit right there.
Yeah, right.
You need to sit there during meetings.
Next item, 209 East Ogden Lamborghini Lotus. Board to consider an amendment to the special use permit issued in 2005 to permit the parking of up to 10 vehicles in a front yard setback.
I apologize. The petitioner does not appear to be here this evening. I did speak to them this afternoon, and they indicated that someone would be present to represent the application. So what is the board's pleasure?
Why don't we take this item and move it to the end of the agenda, if they're happy to show up?
Yeah.
And we can, we can take care of it that way.
Yep. I think it's pretty cut and dried, but we can wait and see.
Next item, 110 South Cass, Alicia E. Salon. Board to consider the following request: A special use permit request operate a ground floor beauty parlor in the B1 Limited Business District, and B development permit request operate a beauty parlor in the B1 Limited Business District.
Good evening. Alicia Ellerby, and I've been beautifying the women of Westmont for almost 17 years now. I would like to move just three doors down and continue my business in a slightly larger location. So.
Questions, board members?
Can we combine this with number nine? At least talk about them both, since it's the same premise?
Um, whatever.
What?
The facade?
It's the same building, 110.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, it is the same building, isn't it?
Well, trustee, we do have Mr. Patel, the owner of the building, present here, and if you'd like him to come forward and ask questions at the same time, I'm sure he'd be amenable.
Because if the, if the beauty parlor is moving in there, we want to hear what it's gonna look like.
Me, too, I want to know, too.
It'll look good. Beautiful. Hi, Mr. Patel, number, uh, item number nine, 110 South Cass Avenue. I own that property. Uh, we want to improve the facade, and I think I have provided the quotations and the improvement to Mr. Kimball. Uh, so I would request, we want to remove the wood facing, and we want to make a brick. And it was like 50s or 60s construction, we want to keep it original, in original shape. It should look nice, that's what is the, that's what I propose.
What is the brick that's under that wood front?
So it's the house tall, it's 50s building, 50s style, yeah.
It's a European-style brick, I believe, trustee, and the Downtown Development Grant Committee first received Mr. Patel's, uh, application for a downtown grant, and it included power washing and replacing some deteriorated wood panels on the front. And, uh, you know, harkening back to the days of downtown Westmont and the historic preservation, Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, we had some conceptual drawings of what the brick looked like underneath that. So we convinced Mr. Patel to have his contractor remove just a couple of test portions, and we were very surprised to see that the underlying brick was in outstanding condition. And Mr. Patel, uh, agreed at a slight additional cost to himself to remove the wood facade in favor of this very fine brick surface underneath, which we think is going to make for a much more attractive and long-lasting, uh, building front.
But, cause that wood, it looks like a, you know, an old western saloon movie right now.
It's very bad.
So we certainly appreciate Mr. Patel's willingness to cooperate in that regard. We think it's gonna be a, a good investment for him and, and make a, a better value building for him in the long run.
That'll look nice.
More attractive to draw more.
Then we'll have a nice, a lovely salon in it.
Are you doing anything else with the front, the wind, the windows or the door?
We're gonna replace the windows on the first floor, on the windows and the whole front will be different.
New windows and new door?
And I believe some repair mayor of the
Doors on the door and the ground, I think there are enough
There's a tile entry, the step area that needs to have some repairs, and then I think repainting, and some light fixtures in the
Light fixtures, and the front glass is broken, the window glass, I'll replace that also.
Okay, okay.
So the recommendation from the Downtown Development Grant Committee to the Village Board would be for a maximum allowable $5,000 facade grant for the eligible expenses that Mr. Patel has enumerated in his estimates.
It'd be great. Okay, great. So see, your customers can walk into a beautiful building and then walk out beautiful.
That's right.
That'll be the plan.
Yes.
Uh, so that said, is Alicia E.'s gonna be any different other than having more space, you know, to spread out or bring in another chair or whatever? Is there gonna be any difference in how you run your business?
Um, no.
No additional services, or?
No. You know, I wanted to do something like, um,
Wedding dresses?
Uh, facials, uh, but maybe and maybe not, because there's a room there that I thought was closed, but it's not, so that may be out.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Great. Thank you. Both items will be on for Monday.
And we'll keep them together.
Next item, 233 West 63rd, Westmont Yards. Board to hear a project update and consider a development agreement change request from Mr. Bill Gust, developer of Westmont Yards indoor soccer facility at 233 West 63rd.
Uh, Your Honor, I
I understand Mr. Gust has had the Park District Board meeting
Oh, that's right.
Okay. We will wait for him to arrive. Next item, 14 North Cass, Invincitore Restaurant. Board to consider downtown development grant request from Mr. Bob Erdou of Invincitore Restaurant at 14 North Cass. Please come forward, Bob.
Well, that was tiny timing.
Morning, sir. Board.
Tell us about your project.
I submitted, uh, to Fred, uh, we had, uh, pictured a layout and everything, so, uh, the other one's, you know, eight years old, it's weather beaten.
Okay.
Uh, so we want, wanna put, you know, some, uh, you know, the name on the awning, too. So I'm meeting with them on Tuesday. Uh, it's gonna be, they, we're gonna pull out all the arms, repaint everything, put a few lights underneath there to lighten it up.
So it's gonna be a permanent
Permanent, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the one we got now is, I could, you know, move it out, move it in, but we never move it because we leave it in one place, and, you know, if you move it in too far and people are sitting underneath there, when it rains, you know, they get wet, so, uh, this will be, uh, just like Amber Cross Street. It's black and, uh,
And what else?
It'll be permanent till this one gets beaten up, and then we'll have to get another one.
You're planning some other things, too, some?
Yeah, we're gonna repaint underneath, in the front there, when we pull all that off.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm gonna put a few lights underneath the canopy, so it's lit up a little bit, the entranceway.
Bob? I, I don't know if I'm reading this right, but on the proposal from ABS Electric, does it say install an outdoor speaker by the front door?
By the front door, when you walk in.
A speaker?
Like, when you walk in the restaurant, so when we have music, our singers
But, but that wouldn't be on Cass Avenue, it would be inside.
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I gotcha. So on the inside. You gonna open up those windows?
Yeah, we're working on that.
It looks nice. Looks very nice.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I believe the recommendation of the committee is for a maximum 50% grant, I believe Mr. Erdou has submitted bills in an approximate amount of $7,418, so roughly half of that would be $3,709, and that would be the recommendation of the committee.
Okay. Very good.
That is.
And any further questions? It'll be on the agenda for Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
All right.
Backing up, number seven, 233 West 63rd. Westmont Yards. Board to hear a project update
That was over at the, uh, the Park District Board meeting.
That's what we understand.
All right, sorry about that.
Board to hear a project update and consider a development agreement change request from Mr. Bill Gust, developer of the Westmont Yards indoor soccer facility at 233 West 63rd.
Yes.
Please, sir.
Thank you, thank you, board. Um, yeah, so I just wanted to give you an update on where we are. Everything is, is on track to be open in, or to be completed in mid-July, so that's good news. Hopefully, they'll be putting the field in in a couple of weeks, so that's exciting. Um, and then I wanted to give an update on the plans for the retail. Is this working? Is it, okay, I can put something on there. Just to give a, I don't know how well it'll
It'll focus.
Okay. That's just a flyer, but I was just, I don't know if it'll be too, but right here, you can see this is just the layout, so you have, the, this is the whole field here, which is the, the 60-yard by 90-yard field that we can put into three fields, and these are the retail over here. So this is 63rd Street, so this would be the west side, and there's the five retail slots. Um, and so what I think we will be doing on the retail, or what I hope we will be doing on the retail, is using the west three for a restaurant concept, the retail number two, or this middle one here, for speed and agility training, and this one for sports retail. That's sort of the longer-term plan. And we're working with the investment group, and we're working with three restaurants now. Um, and, and what we're trying to do is, I, I think the first thing we need to do is verify the traffic flows, because the whole benefit of this retail part is all of the people that we can bring through for the sports facility. So when we're talking to people, they're like, oh, great, great concept, but let's see the flows of, of, you know, the people coming through and using the soccer, which we'll have in, in the fall, once we're open and can verify. So we're talking to either somebody else doing this, or the investment group may just invest in it, we're talking to, to three, oh, there we go, restaurant concepts, all which would be sort of family-style burger restaurants. And the idea, which I think will be cool, is these two, sort of, the, the kitchen part would be over here, and, and the service, and, and this would be the seating, and this would be the, we may put, like, redemption games in there, which would be sort of like a Chuck E. Cheese concept. And the idea is, now you can bring your kids here, they can play, you know, games while you're, while you're eating, and also, if the field's not being used, we can put activities out there, so they can go out and jump on inflatables, and it becomes sort of a kid activity slash restaurant. In the, in the times, you know, September, October, we're not using it. So that's the concept we're out with, um, and I think we'll do it, and, and I think the way we'll build this out is hopefully, by the end of the year, we'll start with the restaurant, um, and then we do the sports training after that, and then, and then the sports retail, if all goes well, and hopefully have everything in place by the fall of next year.
Bill, did you want to comment? We had discussions with you that you may want to temporarily use this for a training area or
Oh, you're always stealing my thunder. Yes, so I'm back asking for the third time. We put the sign out like you asked, and the sign was there.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And we did get some calls, but they were, uh, let's see, we got a financial, they weren't retail-oriented, there was a financial advisor, there was a couple others. It wasn't overwhelming in this economic environment, shockingly, um, but I think we do have a plan for it, and yes, so for the, for the third time, I was hoping to come and ask, the, the ask on this is, we do have a plan for this, and, and what we plan to do is, is to draw out the plans, and, and right now, it's coming, it, it doesn't show great, because what we were gonna do is leave it gravel, and that way, because that's the most flexible, then whoever comes in, we can put the plumbing there and, and move it around without having to tear up concrete. But, thank you to, oh, our fire friends aren't here, but you've got, it's not, not the greatest-looking thing, because you've got all the fire protection up on the ceiling and in the gravel. So we're hoping with this to take our plans, our long-range plans, get the architect to lay out what the plumbing would look like for the restaurant, the, the retail and this, then we could put the plumbing in, then we could put in the concrete floor, and then we would have everything set. And then with the concrete floor, then we could put turf over it and use it as a training just through till the, to sometime in the winter or spring, whenever we start to build, and then we can just peel up and, and then start to, to build it. But in the meantime, we can use it as a training area, that, what does that allow us to do? A few things. One, it allows us to finish the space now, so it'll show better than just having it be dirt. Uh, the other thing it helps with is, it would fit in, and I don't know if we talked about hosting the, the Chambers Fall Festival, which they want to try and do down at 63rd Street to, to, um, bring up the profile of the area, and, and I think the benefit of trying to do it at Westmont Yard is, then they wouldn't need a tent, because we could do things indoors, and, and so it'd bring up the profile. But one of the great spaces that they would use to put on Irish dancing and whatever the other events are, would be that front retail space, but you can't use it unless it's got the, the concrete. So if we could get the concrete floor down, it helps with that. And I think just overall, it, it helps to accelerate the timeframe on this, because now I can at least take the plan, um, and we can at least have some money from doing the training over the next few months, and use that to get the architect's plan, work with all the great people at, uh, the various agencies to get the plans approved, the Health Department, they're particularly fun. I think that's everything.
The building looks beautiful.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Oh, it looks awesome.
Yeah, it's coming along.
Yeah.
So
How are the plans coming along when you do have, uh, your meets going on? For the additional parking?
Yes, oh, okay.
For the west? How is that going to be?
Would it be, I, I would've thought the additional parking was with the Park District to the east.
To the east.
Is that, okay.
Whichever way it is.
Okay, sorry.
Where are you gonna park the overflow?
Yes, that's what I was just over at the Park District talking with them about.
Okay.
And, uh, for a couple of ideas with them, and one was to try and use, the, the three things we were talking about, is to try and use the detention area that they have over there, the small part of the field that really doesn't get used much. We, we have a daycare as part of this, it's gonna be up there, which is a, it's a concept of an active daycare, which is really cool, because you have this field that's not used during the day, you've got 40,000 square feet, and now you can bring these kids in during the day, and they're up there in the daycare, but they go down, and twice a day, they can, in the morning, they can go out and, and play on the field. But on the night, and then there's another area, you know, we have our DCFS-approved playground area out on the side, but on nice days, it would be nice if, you know, right across the park, you can go over there. So anyways, we're talking to them about that, and where were we going with all of this? Oh, the parking, yes, and the other part in parcel was the parking lot, using the parking lot for overflow parking. So I introduced that idea with them, they are open to the idea, the staff is looking at sort of how would they, you know, how would we enter into this relationship, so they're gonna go and look at other ways, but I, I think that, you know, we can come to agreement on that.
I think in one of those front areas, you should find a way to bottle your enthusiasm and sell it.
Yeah. I think, yeah, well, wait till we get it finished, then I think I'll really get enthusiastic.
That's great.
It'll be good. Um, and so, and then just on what's going on, on, on the actual business on the sports facility, there's been strong interest on the communities, um, we're gonna have soccer leagues, we're gonna have soccer training. One of the things we've been working with is, is a lot of the recreational players in, in developing a recreational league, because you have, what goes on now is, people do AYSO or Park District, and, and then if they're, get a little more serious about it, they end up having to flip into travel, which is a lot more money, and, and now we're trying to give them opportunities where they could stay in, in recreational, and they can, and do recreational leagues indoor and training, so it allows them, I think it'll be huge for the community, so we're excited about that.
Great.
Um, I think that, that covered everything.
Questions, board members?
Looks great.
Uh, this question for the, for the agreement that I've put together, which by the way is attached to the ordinance that was passed out tonight, is the time period for this non-retail use of two of the five retail spaces. Staff recommended a year. I don't know if that works with your suggested time schedule. How long, uh, are we, should the Village Board, you know, approve this?
Can we do, can we do a year and then evaluate after the year?
And if he wants to extend it?
For the two, for the two units.
Wait, and you've confused me, because what I was, I, I think my ask is to take all five of them and make them a field through March, so it doesn't have to be a year, or whatever, um, for all five. So maybe there's a discrepancy. You wanted to do, uh, maybe way back, I think that sounds
I'm sorry, that, that sounds the, the write-up to the Village Board.
Yes, and that was probably my confusion, because I think the last time I came in, I was gonna try and do two, and now I'm looking at it and saying, well, why not just do the whole five, I'm gonna just, because then I'll cement out the whole thing. Um, and that's probably just a change from me, from the last time I requested this.
But that would only be until March?
Yeah, only till March. And I'm hoping not to have that long, I'm hoping, but
Well, because if the restaurant wants to move in sooner, obviously
Right, oh, they, believe me, we'll
You'd be ready to let them do that.
We'll pull it out, yeah, we'll, we'll do better with a restaurant than we will
So it's for all five?
Yes, the request would be to change the special use permit to allow us to use, utilize all five on a temporary basis till March of 2011.
It's like seven or eight months.
Yeah, I mean, from opening, yeah, not even really, yeah, yes.
What's the, what's the ceiling height in the retail space unfinished?
Unfinished, I want to say 16 feet.
Wow.
Okay, now, you talked about putting in the plumbing and concreting the floor, putting turf, AstroTurf down.
Yes.
And so, the ceiling will hold the fire equipment?
The fire is already in, the sprinkler is in, and so we'd still have to put in lights, and we'd have to put in, and we have to put in the heating and the air conditioning regardless.
Okay, the question I have is, how rough is all that going to be? I mean, if you're using it for training?
Yes.
Is it going to present a danger where, you know, if somebody's kicking a ball at 30 miles an hour and it hits, it hits electrical, it hits lights, it hits sprinklers, whatever?
Yes.
Are we going to have a problem with that type of thing in a ceiling?
Right, correct.
In a training facility.
Excellent question. No, we're going to put a net over the whole thing, on the sides, to keep it off of the tempered glass, at least on the front, the, or, excuse me, on the retail glass on the front. We may not put it on the back, because that, because the other side of the back is soccer, so it's already impact glass, so you can't hurt that side of it.
What about the whole?
But in the roof, yes, yeah, absolutely, we've got to put it there for the lights. Technically, we could just put cages over the lights, because that's what's on the field. The field doesn't have a net over it, but that's 35 feet, and you're right, you can kick a soccer ball a lot harder. Technically, they're supposed to be able to take a baseball at full speed with the cages on them, but I think we're going to put the net up there, just.
Okay, I was just curious.
Because you're right, they're going to find the sprinkler, God knows what they'll find, but they'll find it, if we don't have a net, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, not for me.
No further questions, and we'll be on for consideration Monday.
Okay, so the process is you vote on Monday.
Can we have the amendment to all five? Because right now, it reads two, so can we have the amendment to all five?
On the agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you very much, I apologize I was late for my.
No problem. Thank you. Next item, Board of Fire and Police Commissioners Policies and Procedures Ordinance. Board to consider an ordinance amending the applicable references for police hiring by the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners.
Good evening, my name's Joe Hearn, Sir, and I'm the Secretary of the Westmont Board of Fire and Police Commissioners. The ordinance which is being presented tonight is to amend the rules in such a way that it allows us to basically maintain two separate lists, if is so desired at some point in time. One, for the normal testing methodology we do, and one for officers who already are police officers, current police officers who are seeking employment with the Village of Westmont. It would allow us to then put this into our rules. The language was just a minor amendment that was required in our current enabling language, so that we could have these two differential items in our, in our rules and regulations, and act in that manner, if it is so desired at some point in time. As a brief update, right now, we're going through the hiring process of two officers. What we did is we went and we went through the pass list, which we did last August, and we selected all of the people who have their certificate as a law enforcement, who are either current or recently terminated police officers, and we brought them in for interviews, which we are allowed by state law to do, interviewed those candidates, and are working through a group of five of those to fill the two positions. And they are right now at the position of going, the detectives are doing background checks on three of the five candidates. We pared that down to, that down to three candidates, so that's where we are, but this will allow us to do that. In the ordinance that was presented, and I don't know if it's been amended, but.
Yes.
It has been amended, but we, there was a statement in there that would have had us hiring everybody, and we really didn't want to get in the business hiring the telecommunications secretaries or anybody else. We want to let Tom and the village staff handle that job, and we had put a minor amendment in, in the copy I saw. So, if you have any questions about what this request is, I'm available to answer them.
Just to clarify, what was passed out tonight in your ordinance packet is the correct version, there was, the word sworn officers was, the word sworn was added, and the word members was deleted, and essentially the change.
Yeah, and that way, we don't get the other people. We've got enough work to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Next item, Westmont Police Pension Fund Board to consider the appointment of Thomas Kennedy as a civilian representative to the Westmont Police Pension Fund for a two-year term commencing June 7th, 2010.
Good evening. The Westmont Police Pension Fund has a five-member board, which includes two appointed positions that are appointed by the Village Board and Mayor. Each year, one of those positions is up for reappointment, and this year, it is Thomas Kennedy, who has currently been on the board and serving, and wishes to once again serve on the board for another two-year term. His information was in the packet, and if you have any questions, he was unable to be here this evening, but if you have any questions, I can.
Has he only been on there for two years, or has he been on there longer?
Four years, this would be his third.
Okay, third.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
I think the next item is mine too, so I'll just stand here.
Next item, Audit Firm Selection Board to consider motion approving the selection of Sikich LLP as the Village's independent audit firm for fiscal year 2009, 2010.
The Village is required to have a comprehensive annual financial report and audit prepared by an independent accounting service, and we have been using Sikich now for seven years, since, well, 2005, we started with them fiscal year 2005. We are done with a contract that we had previously with them, and went out for a one-year quote, and have been given direction recently to then go out and do proposals after this fiscal year is done, to go out for requests for proposals again. So, I got information from Sikich, and they did put together actually a three-year proposal just so they could, for the future, so that we could see where they were at with what their increases would be, or where their fees would fall. They did, for the 2009, 2010 fiscal year that we're talking about auditing, in the one-year contract, they submitted a price of $25,394, which is actually equal to what we paid last year and the year before for the audit, so there was no increase over what we've been paying. And then the single audit price was $3,975, and that's just if we have that requirement for grants, particular grants at certain levels, if we are awarded them, are required to have a single audit done just of that grant, those grant monies. So, those have to be done separately.
How often are we required to go out and get new proposals?
We actually are not required at all for auditing services, no, it is not, under the statute, it is not a required thing. We do that in order to stay competitive and to see how we're doing and to get pricing, but we are not required to.
Okay. Questions?
Well, you did go out, and there, did others apply?
We didn't on this one, we just asked them for a proposal. They gave us a three-year, even though I had said, you know, we're looking for one, they gave three and said, well, you know, if you're going to look, you can see where our next two years are anyway. They had submitted for the fiscal year 11 and 12 as well, and those each had a three-and-a-half percent increase over this current fiscal year, but that's because there have been a lot of GASMIE pronouncements that have come out. The Government Accounting Standards Board comes out with pronouncements every year, and there have been several that have been very labor-intensive, that allotted of additional time that is required, so the prices have been escalating, and three-and-a-half is not unreasonable for two years out. So, I expect that if we do go out to bid this fall, that we would see the prices very similar to what they gave us for the next couple of years.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Next item, prevailing wage rate ordinance, Board to consider adoption of the Illinois Prevailing Wage Act.
This has to be approved by end of June every year?
Next item, furlough days ordinance, Board to consider amending the municipal code to provide for a 39-hour work week in lieu of a 40-hour work week for fiscal year 2010, 2011, in order to assist in balancing the budget.
I guess I can speak to this. The Board approved this same request last year, it was for a single year, it's part of the budget to again approve the 39-hour work week for this next year, but no further than that. The only other change from last year is to allow individual departments to opt for a 38, or I guess less-hour work week, if approved by the department head and village manager. And the, it would basically be voluntary by the employees offering to do that.
And again, thank you to all of our employees for their contribution to helping us balance our budget.
Any other questions? Matt, moving right along, finance ordinance, number two.
Wait, the reading?
Actually, I think it's number three.
Wave the reading of three.
Quest to wave the reading. Any questions on purchase orders? Are you no questions? Moving right along, executive session. Assistant Village Manager has requested an executive session regarding personnel and land conveyance sale price.
So, are we just going to leave the Lamborghini thing on and?
Oh, yeah, what are we doing about Lamborghini?
We'll just put it on for Monday. Or wait for the, for the next one?
Thought we were going to pull it till the next.
Shannon, I'll address this for us.
I can contact the petitioner for Monday evening and see if they can prepare to be present at that time instead, or I can give a brief presentation now, or we can hold off for another set, it's, it's up to you.
Shannon, how many spaces does he have right now?
When the special-use permit was approved originally, in 2004, it was for four, for cars to be parked on the paver area.
Personally, I think it should go on the next set of meetings, I think that could warrant some discussion. It's a significant change, but I'll go with whatever everybody else thinks.
No, I agree, I agree, and it's, it's one of those things where if somebody doesn't, unless something came up, if he doesn't care enough to show up and explain it to us, we can at least, we'll give him the courtesy of kicking it to the next meeting, but.
I think I'd like to know if it's going to be the cars that he sells, or it's going to be used cars.
Yeah, I think we have questions and.
And Monday night's not the night to.
Normally do a Thursday night agenda item.
So, he'd have to go to the 17th, then, right?
Yep.
Okay, we'll postpone it until the next meeting.
Just postpone it for two weeks.